Okay. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene back into our open session. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Couple of days before our, our, our love day, Valentine's Day. So, uh, if we will, I'm gonna go ahead and ask if you guys would all please stand. We're going to have our K Park Air Force ROTC present the colors tonight.
Ours. Alt. And others.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And E, others. Others, O's.
Best to please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Yes, me, are you ready?
Okay, we're ready. That's Dr. Fagan, if you would please.
All right. One hundred years ago, in February of 1919, the Texas Legislature created UMBLE ISD. Before the creation of our district, students in the area were educated by county school districts. We're very proud to be UMBLE ISD, and we will celebrate our district's history this Saturday night with an entertaining program called "UMBLE ISD: 100 Years in the Making." Tonight's inspiring moment is a collection of social media commercials we're using to promote this event, to help share our history. I want to thank students from Timbers and Foster Elementary Schools for starring in the videos. Let's take a look. All right. I hope to see all of you there this Saturday at 5:00 PM at Turner Stadium. Joel Olsteen, a graduate of UMBLE High School, will be speaking. A Kingwood High School graduate, Gary Kyle, will be performing with his band. There will be student performances, historical information, and fireworks. It's free, too. You don't need a ticket. Just head over to Turner Stadium, enjoy the program, and celebrate UMBLE ISD's 100th Year Birthday. All right, moving on. Next, UMBLE ISD partners with businesses for the benefit of the community and the school district. I'm going to ask Melissa Kreiser, UMBLE ISD Energy Manager, to share information about the Load Shed Program.
All right, good evening. Proud to say that I was one of those, what, 68,000 graduates from UMBLE ISD myself, kindergarten through 12th grade, so it's awesome to have a 100 year celebration. All right, UMBLE ISD and the Department of Energy Management is proud to continue its partnership with CenterPoint Energy. The commercial load management program, also called the Low Shed Program, is designed to decrease the chances of blackouts and brownouts in our community, and we see this as a way to serve our neighbors and be good stewards of the available resources in our community. By agreeing to turn off major equipment in some of our larger schools, our larger buildings, for a short period of time, this takes load off the grid, and the community is able to carry on with business as usual. This is a program that operates only during the summer months, so school days are not affected. In exchange for our participation, CenterPoint provides incentives to the district to help fund future energy projects. This past year, our district was awarded $34,214.45 for its participation, and since 2012, more than $265,000 worth of incentives from this program have been paid to UMBLE ISD. There are some people in the district that have helped make this program a success. Director of Maintenance, Kenny Kendrick. HVAC Supervisor, Chris Johnson. And Control Specialist, Carol Courtney. Here with us tonight, Associate Superintendent Nolan Correa, thank you Nolan, and Utility Data Specialist Veronica Deleon, thank you Veronica. Here to present our check this evening is Calvin Burnham, who is the Staff Consulting Engineer for Energy Efficiency for CenterPoint Energy. Calvin, thank you for being here and for all of your guidance and support for UMBLE ISD.
UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in making Team UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at the school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. And this month, the Superstaffer Award is sponsored by a donor who would like to remain anonymous. So let's start with the elementary superstaffer, which is Lindsay Renin from Eagle Springs Elementary. So, let me talk a little about Lindsay and with Donna Burkhardt, please come on up here too and join us, Assistant Principal for Eagle Springs. Lindsay is a 5th grade teacher at Eagle Springs, and her, the superstaffer nominations for Eagle Springs are focused each month on the competency of the portrait of a graduate. So Lindsay was chosen for leader and collaborator. She works collaboratively with her team to create innovative lessons. She has been instrumental in developing engaging math stations and daily facilitates small group instruction, causing great growth and achievement for all students. She's an honest person who prefers to lead with grace. She's a great problem solver, solver, and her team often goes to her for advice. She is a leader at Eagle Springs who is well-respected by peers, students, and parents. So being honored as the secondary superstaffer tonight is Douglas Chandler from UMBLE High School.
UMBLE High School graduate.
So, an UMBLE High School graduate is what he said? Yeah? And joining him up front is Assistant Principal Kim Mauser. So Mr. Chandler has a unique ability to inspire active learning. He has exceptional teaching skills, outstanding rapport with students, holds students to a rigorous academic standard, and supports by scaffolding content until they meet his expectations. He comes to school every day with a positive attitude, ready and willing to help his colleagues and students. For that, we give Mr. Chandler an A+. So being honored tonight as the support superstaffer is Monica Como from the Purchasing Office Department. Your fan club is here with you. And then Assistant Director Melinda Sappington, will you come and join us up front? Thank you. In Monica's nomination, they wrote, "We have been honored to have Monica as a part of our purchasing family for five years." Monica's official title is a bid specialist, but anyone who has worked with her can tell her she does so much more. She is the department trainer, making sure all new bookkeepers are taught all aspects of the requisition process. She is admired by all of her fun and loving personality. We are truly blessed to have her in the purchasing department. Congratulations, Monica.
Okay. Okay, next we'll go into our board comments. We just want everyone to remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue is mentioned, is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. First on our list, we will have Ms. Rawlinson-Gayla. Approaching up there.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gayla Rawlinson Maynard. I work with Harris County Department of Education, and I'm here to honor the UMBLE ISD Board and the work that we've done together over these years in accomplishing so many things. So I have several things I must say, I've been instructed to say. President Cunningham, members of the board, Superintendent Fagan, thank you for this opportunity to be here this evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of HCD to honor the special partnership we have with you. As many of you know, we exist, HCD exists, to support public education in Harris County. We offer many, many services and initiatives within the 25 districts within Harris County. As such, we impact approximately 1 million students with our support and services each year. Locally, we serve more than 100,000 students and nearly 40,000 staff members with after-school programming, adult education classes, special schools, occupational and physical therapy services, Head Start Centers in your actual community, workforce development programs, online learning modules, and professional development for teachers and administrators. We also indirectly support more than 50,000 students with school safety audits and practices, research and evaluation, my own office, which is grants development, purchasing cooperative, records management, and business support services. However, you may not know that during this past year, HCD was very involved with UMBLE ISD. UMBLE ISD interacted with 10 out of our 15 divisions this past year. Last year, we provided professional development through our Teaching and Learning Center to 30 ISD educators. 81 children within the UMBLE area participated in our Head Start Program. We had 118 educators go through training through that very program. We served 25 ISD students through our High Point School and an additional 19 students through our therapy services. Our after-school programs, you've heard 21st Century Community Learning Centers for probably many, many, many years now, but they offer EcoBot Challenge, our Case for Kids, many of you may have heard of them, and we impacted 926 students within this community and 53 educators. So we collaborate with your district on after-school grants. We're very proud of our continued collaboration and how together we positively, positively impact your schools, students, staff, and the local community. Tonight, we have a small gift for the board to commemorate our continued collaboration and partnership, and what it reads, and I will pass this around because, and I am blind. So, "Presented to UMBLE ISD in recognition of supporting student achievement and staff excellence, 2018 to 2019." So, I also have a packet of information I'd like to share with you as well. Thank you again for this opportunity to be here tonight to just highlight a few of the ways that we've been able to join forces and work together to support this community. So, thank you so much.
I'm not gonna take it home. Okay, thank you very much. Now we will have Ms. Stacy Ward.
I would also like to say that I am a graduate of UMBLE High School as well. So, make that 68,001.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Fagan, my name is Stacy Ward, and I'm a 5th grade teacher at Timbers Elementary. I'm also a member of UMBLE ATPE, which is the Association of Texas Professional Educators. And I would like to start by saying thank you. Thank you for your tireless commitment to UMBLE ISD. Thank you for making decisions to keep UMBLE ISD competitive and innovative. Thank you for your passion, dedication, and commitment to the community, parents, students, and teachers of UMBLE ISD. On behalf of the nearly 1,800 members of UMBLE ATPE, we would like to give you a token of our appreciation to show our thanks for your continued hard work and talents in keeping UMBLE ISD the best place to work and learn. Please accept these cookies as a token of appreciation for the endless hours you spend committed to UMBLE ISD. We look forward to working with you during the upcoming candidate forum for school board elections on April 11th at 7:00 PM. Shameless plug. At the Atascacita High Performing Arts Center. We welcome any questions you might have for our association during the upcoming legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. No, 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 just, uh, come on, Louis. Come on, Stacy, I mean, what do they want to do is, yeah. Gail, Gail's running this thing here.
Yeah, let Gail run this.
So everybody just sit.
I think Angela thinks we should all put down.
I think, yeah.
Come on.
Sorry, guys.
Angela.
Olive juice.
All of you.
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 Okay, and once again, Stacy, Louis, Gail, thank you so much. Don, good to see where was Don at, I thought I saw him, he's already gone.
Okay, next we have Mr. Robert Scarfo.
I just want to discuss two different items, so I beg your indulgence, so I'll shift gears. First, I want to remind each of you, because I sent all of you a letter, that the Council PTA's Founder's Day Lunch is coming up on...
Next Wednesday.
Well, that's close. Wednesday the 27th, that's right, it should be, but I just wanted to remind you, I'm sure, I'm sure your sponsorship checks are in the mail, but just in case, I know you got a lot on your plate, but just in case they didn't get out, you got some time to get them, and you gotta remember, all the money that's raised goes to scholarships for our seniors. Last year, we raised $6,000, and we're trying to break that mark this year. And we're getting close, so every little bit will help, so just a gentle nudge that we'd appreciate it, and we really would love to have you guys there. So I think you're all invited, and you'll be our guests, so thank you for that. And the other item I just wanted to quickly talk about was the annual performance report. Looking at the numbers, the one bar chart, if I'm looking at it right, from 2010 to 17, we had an almost 54% increase in at-risk students. I think that's correct. And I gotta tell you guys that, given that, and you look at the 2017 cohort and the overall graduation rate of north of 93%, and even when you drill down to the different subgroups, they're all very, very high, so I just say kudos to the board, Dr. Fagan, her senior staff, and all the staff, teachers, and administrators in the district, because that's very impressive, given, given the challenge that we have with, with population. That's, that's just great, so keep it up, because you're doing a great job. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Scarfo. Next we'll have individual comments by board members. I will start down on my, my right, to your left, to Ms. Carney.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I want to start by wishing my wife, Jennifer, Happy Valentine's Day. She's recovering from surgery, so she's a little still under the weather, but she's doing better, doing better every day. I'm going to be celebrating Valentine's Day with my other little lady, my daughter Addison, at the Willow Creek Manors banquet on Thursday, so looking forward to that. She is terrified that I'm gonna do something that's gonna completely embarrass her, so if you have any great ideas on how I can do that, please let me know.
Be nice.
I'll try, I'll try. So the last couple of weekends, I've really enjoyed going to the UMBLE rodeo and the auction that we had as well. It was a great time, just wanted to express extreme gratitude and appreciation for all the volunteers that spent a lot of time and effort putting on those events. It was a lot of fun, always enjoyed getting out, seeing, you know, seeing what's going on over there. I also wanted to express get well wishes to my neighbor, Mary Martinez. If anyone was there on Saturday night at the calf scramble, you might have seen somebody have an unfortunate incident. Mary is a freshman at Kingwood High School. She had an amazing weekend, she had a lamb that was the fifth place lamb at the auction. Then she went and had a softball game for Kingwood High School that night when she pitched, and then the next day, she was in the calf scramble, was being part of the FFA, and she really, really, really wanted that calf, and unfortunately, I think the calf won, threw her into the rail, so fortunately, she's doing okay, so get well, Mary. I also wanted to express congratulations to our Teachers of the Year. I look forward to seeing all you guys at the Education Foundation Gala later in April. Can't do what we do without you guys, really appreciate all the effort that you guys put into the classroom, thank you. ATPE, thank you for the cookies. I'm trying to watch what I eat, so I don't know if I'm gonna eat all of these, but my son Blake, I'm sure will go through these in a second. Also, lastly, I'm really looking forward to the UMBLE ISD 100 event this weekend, hope to see all you guys out there. I'm kind of a history buff, and I really enjoy Dr. Mo's efforts with digging up all the archives and, and all the social media posts related to that, so it's been really, really fun to see kind of how things have gone, and, you know, look forward to the next generation for the district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. I'll switch over here now, Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Well, first I'd like to say Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Second, I had the opportunity to go to DC recently for the Advocacy Institute in place of our illustrious Vice President Morrison, and it was a wonderful opportunity, I had an opportunity to actually speak to our area senators and representatives about reauthorizing and funding IDEA. Everyone seemed very receptive, and it was a really, I think, well worth the visit. And last, I'm looking forward to our 100 Year Celebration on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Mr. Ellis sitting.
I too. If you didn't know, I'm a graduate from UMBLE High School. One of those 68,000, three generations of graduates from UMBLE High School, actually. My mom graduated from UMBLE High School when it was still in the Bender Building on Higgins, so we go way back. So this weekend is very, very special to our family, and I also want to extend a huge thank you to Dr. Mo for all the work he's done over the years, not just for this event, but for, yes, yes. You know, with his research, the books he's written, and then handling the stuff with the UMBLE, UMBLE City Museum, and if you haven't been to the New Welcome Center and see some of the stuff that Dr. Fagan and her team have put up in the, in the foyer to commemorate this event, it's fantastic. And then Jonathan and Public Information, y'all have done a fantastic job with the communications, the videos have been wonderful. And Jerry Monbaron and your team, you know, what we did is, is come together with some ideas, a small committee of community members and former graduates, and then we turned it over to Jamie and Jerry, and I'm telling you, you need to be there. It is gonna be impressive, and no thanks to you two and your team and everything that y'all have done, and I know that it hasn't been easy, especially with the rodeo, the barbecue cook-off, and everything else that's been going on. This will be three weekends in a row that some of you probably haven't seen your families, so thank you for your tireless efforts, thank you for just the way you showcase UMBLE ISD and the professionalism and, and what we do on a daily basis in this community. So thank you all very, let's give them a hand as well. Two, two more things, the FFA auction was awesome. If you didn't go, we went early and went to Special Kids Day, and we're... and we're, all the special needs students from around the district get to come and, and interact with the animals. It was just, it's just always great. Glenn and Carla Redman put that on every year for us, and, and it was super. Then we go into the auction, the grand champion steer went for $32,000, incredible. One of our community partners bought that. My Edward Jones colleagues and I were able to buy the grand champion hog, so we walked away with that rascal. And you need to show up for the Chamber Golf Tournament, because that's where we're going to be cooking it for you. So, and last but not least, basketball playoffs are, are going on right now as we speak. With boys and girls, we have 10 teams, seven of those 10 teams are in the playoffs. We strive for excellence in everything that we do in Umla ISD. We had two major sports state championships last year, and we're looking forward to several more this year. That's all I got.
Thank you Mr. Sitten, Ms. Conrad.
Thank you Mr. President. So I've been visiting a lot of school districts over the last few weeks and the next several weeks, and I just find myself always looking for indications that they've had the courage to kind of break out of the mold, to help students find and reach their own definition of success. One thing that's clearly evident is the importance of transformational leaders. And I, as a Board member, the most difficult decision I've had to make in my six years is hiring our Superintendent. And this Board has a clear vision of what our future of this school district is, and what we know we want to change. But we know that to change, we don't fight the existing reality, rather we build a model that makes the existing model obsolete. So I'm, I just, I really seeing this transformation over the last two years, and wanted to say something publicly here tonight to just affirm each and every person that is contributing to this effort to kind of break away from that education machine. Dr. Fagan, you're an effective communicator, staying on message about the importance of change. You've energized our constituencies in the community with a compelling vision of how they can best prepare students for a very different world. You articulate an aspirational goal for student outcomes that provides teachers with high level direction and crafting learning experiences. You give teachers and leaders permission to innovate, and you trust them to take small, small steps leading to big change. You are encouraging teachers to design authentic accountability frameworks, subject to checks and balances. And you know from experience that systemic change doesn't happen overnight, something you have to keep reminding us. It takes courage and vision to adopt these principles, to give up controls, you risk small failures in a gotcha world where social media can blow up the miniscule. You put your career online to do what you know what is best for our kids, all kids. So thank you for your commitment, not only to doing things better, but to doing better things, thank you.
All right, thank you Ms. Conrad, Ms. Morrison.
Well, I would love to ditto that one. Okay, again, I want to say another thank you for Glenn and Carla Redman for Special Kids Day. If any of you have, if you have not gone to it, you need to go to it, to see our little special kids at the rodeo. They thoroughly enjoy it, and it is just a very, very special day for them. Again, I'll ditto the auction, Mr. Fellow Member Sitten knows how well I love it. And I enjoy the, the day with Dr. Fagan, we have a lot of fun. Glad Mr. Carney could come this year and see us all. But we have had so many aculent, you know, celebrations and everything, and again, a little bird told me that, looks like we have another one, Ms. Kreiser was nominated, I understand, for Energy Board. Congratulations. Again though, it just continues the staff, the quality staff that we have here in Umla. We just, we turn out special people, special students, and we should be so very proud, so I'm going to cut it short there.
All right, thank you Ms. Morrison. Dr. Fagan, any comments from the Administration?
Well, thank you Ms. Conrad, it was a, that was a nice surprise, and, and very much appreciated. Certainly, I know Superintendent does those things alone, and so I have to say thanks to all the folks in every single classroom, campus, support staff, et cetera, that have taken the opportunity to be the best in what they do, and, and taken those small risks and steps forward, and I do, I agree with you. I, I feel that the folks in this district are second to none in each of their expertise, and are not afraid to try to take that step forward in being something beyond what education has been in the past. So we're very lucky to have a family like the Umla ISD family. And to that end, I just want to say that, you know, the legislative session is in, in full swing, and, you know, a lot of times we kind of sit back and say, well, they're going to do what they're going to do. But education is really at the center of that conversation this year with, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure that in 11 years as Superintendent, this is the first year where I've had the state legislator, legislative leaders say to me, we're going to, we have money, and we have $9 billion that we want to put into education. Always in the past, it's we have no money, and you all need to keep doing those great things you're doing with no more money. So this is really an opportunity in our state to come together and, and to set a course forward. The, the way I understand it is they are going to actually repeal Chapter 41 and Chapter 42, which are the way that education is funded in the state of Texas, and put forward a 500-page new funding bill that will completely redefine and recreate the way that, that the districts are funded in our state. And so certainly, those can be challenging times for all of us, and so I think that the most important thing for all of us to remember, and when you have an opportunity to interact with Senator Creighton, or Representative Huberty, or any of those folks that you're close to, please encourage them to remember that not all districts are the same, and that education is personal and it's local. And that's why we in this community elect seven great trustees who know our community, who have children in our schools, who care about our staff, really know what our strengths are and what our challenges are to make these decisions. And when, when the state comes forward with highly prescriptive means sort of things, and hands them down to all districts, it's not a recipe for improvement. It's actually a recipe for regression to the mean, not to be too education-eased there, but it, it really isn't the right approach. And so that's been my message, whether I had the opportunity to be on the phone with some of the Governor's staff, or with others, is that please remember that Umla ISD is unique and special, just as all districts are, and that our local folks are the right folks to make those, those really detailed decisions. Please do fund the system, we are absolutely in favor of that. Please do fund dyslexia for the first time ever in Texas, we're all in favor of that. There's many positive things, many positive conversations, but when we start hearing things about handing down one-size-fits-all systems to reward third grade reading, or reward certain teachers, that makes me nervous, because we have a really great culture, we have a really great education system here for children, we grow by about 1,000 students a year, people want to be here, our results speak for themselves. And so we need to be empowered to make those decisions that are best for our children, our students, and we're not afraid of accountability, don't hear me to say that, we absolutely are in favor of meeting expectations on a statewide level, but please allow us, the experts in our community, to design those systems moving forward, because, you know, I think that we're ahead of the, the curve in so many ways, and I would certainly hate to see us take a step back. So I just want to send that, that sort of plea and message out, to be involved in the process. You don't understand how far an email from somebody goes when, when this whole session is in full swing. They expect Superintendents to show up and say certain things, but they don't expect all of you to do that. So please do participate, pay attention, support the leaders who want to fund education, and encourage them to allow us to make a lot of those decisions at the local level about how to meet those expectations. I think those are really important parts of, of the next few months that we're going to go through together, as we set a new budget for a new year to accomplish wonderful things, hopefully significant increases in pay, we're hearing that all over the place, and I'm a, I'm a fan of that, I think that it's, it's great that Texas wants to fund teacher salary at a professional level. So that's a, that's a wonderful piece that is coming out of this conversation, and I think we're going to have a lot more. So with that, Mr. Cunningham, oh, and please do come out on Saturday. I know we're all like, I went to the barbecue cook-off, and I went to the rodeo, and I, and I just like, I'm just super excited to put on my pajamas and watch TV, but this is really a rare opportunity to celebrate 100 year birthday for a school district. And so we need to just, you know, gather up that perseverance that makes us special, and, and come on out. And, you know, and after all, there are fireworks, so that should make it all worthwhile, if nothing else, so I do hope to see everybody there.
Thank you Dr. Fagan, next we'll have our updates from our Board Associations and Committees, and we will start with our Building and Planning Committee, Ms. Dixon.
I know you all, I know the Board all has a copy of the report, but there is one thing that I wanted to point out. I'd like to thank the Umla Mayor Merle Aaron and City Manager Jason Stube for coming out to share some points that they wanted us to keep in mind when building, or leading to the discussion in building Lakeland Elementary. And that's really all that I want to share directly, are there any questions about the report? Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move right on into the Finance Committee with our Chair, Mr. Sitten.
Yes, Mr. Cunningham, we, we met this afternoon, I've been here all day it seems like, but a couple, a couple of major points, I wanted to reiterate the legislative actions that are going on, or debates that are going on, and, and the potential impact it could have to, to all public education, good or bad. I mean, it's like anything else, you're not going to please everybody, not everyone's going to come out of this thing a winner. Some school districts are going to come out smelling like a rose, and others are going to be begging for money. So our legislators need, need to hear from you. I know that there will be Ms. Morrison and Mr. Cunningham and I will be in, in Austin on the 25th and 26th with a group from the Chamber of Commerce, so I know the PTA, there's a PTA Day, there's a lot of moving parts. We need, they need to hear you. Umla ISD needs to have a major, major voice in this. You know, we have, we're fortunate that the Chairman of the Public Ed Committee is in our neighborhood, Representative Dan Huberty, so we have his ear, and he listens, and he knows about public ed. He's one of the smartest, smartest individuals I've talked to in regards to school finance. But he can't do it by himself, so he's got to hear from you. The other point I wanted to make from our meeting, trustees, you may remember, we did authorize the reappraisals last year. So 3,944 reappraisals have been done, over 2.2, almost $2.3 million in refunds have been issued. There's a handful still out there that we have not gotten back from Harris County, and so we're waiting on that to finish those up, but we're talking like, you know, 100 or so. But over $2.3 million in refunds have gone out with over almost 4,000 reappraisals. So with that, I will give it back to you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sitten, Ms. Morrison, your Advocacy Committee?
Yes, I want to thank Mrs. Dixon for going to DC and being part of the advocacy group up there. Also, we met at HARTA, which is the Umla Area Retired Teachers, and listened to Representative Huberty. And one of the things I want to ditto and continue to say is, it's very important that each and every person contact their representatives and their Senators. And like Dr. Fagan said, for the very first year, we're hearing both sides, Senate and House of Representatives, we have money. Okay, the thing about it is, how is it going to be spread? Mr. Cunningham had, had gone to a meeting February 5th at the state level on emergen, on the Lieutenant Governor's emergency priorities, of which I'm going to read to you, and understand that these are coming from the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor. First of all, school finance reform and teacher pay. Now, teacher pay through incentives, which is the ACE model, as you listened very carefully to Dr. Fagan, not knowing whether or not this is the greatest model, but that is of interest at the state level. School safety in particular, the mental health was the focus of, of school safety priority. As we know, conversations have come out from more councilors, and these are, these are for mental health. These aren't for testing coordinators. Property tax reform, limiting taxes, taxing authorities' ability to raise taxes. Mentioned reducing Robin Hood in this emergency item. Wants to give Texans the ability to fire their appraisers and elect a new one. Along with that, all the states, all over, the Texas Association of School Boards, there are areas of, of agreement in these things are, to lower taxes, to improve school finance, to control unfunded mandates, improve teacher compensation, improve special education, improve school security and safety, and maintain districts of innovation. It's very important, as Dr. Fagan said, you know, we know what our school district needs. That local control is very important, so those are the highlights right now.
Okay, thank you Ms. Morrison, and I, and I might add, that, that meeting that I had with the Lieutenant Governor on the 5th, actually was supposed to have been about 45 minutes to an hour, he actually left, came back, told us to stay, came back, and so we were there for almost two hours. And so I, I think education has, you know, maybe we can be a friend. So moving on, Mr. Carney, Education Foundation.
Sure, yeah, so we, we talked down the rodeo already, absolutely fantastic event, appreciate all the volunteers involved, Education Foundation staff, community development, you guys all did a fantastic job, so thank you once again. Just a quick reminder from the Education Foundation that employee grant applications are due February 24th, so you can go to umlaisdfoundation.org to apply, so make sure that, if you've got any great ideas, you know, throw them in there, see if you can get a grant. Also, the, the, you mentioned the gala coming up, I know the Committee's hard at work finalizing the, the plan there. It's going to be a great event, looking forward to it, and I think we have a couple of meetings next week as well for Education Foundation, so that's the update.
Thank you sir, Ms. Dixon, this Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council?
Yes, the January meeting, Captain Terry from the Houston PD Kingwood Division provided an update on activities that are happening in the Kingwood area. And the next meeting is February 20th next week, and it is open to the public, that's it.
All right, thank you. We will go ahead and move into our items from closed session. We'll start out, and I would ask, Ms. Dixon, we'll start out with A on student expulsions, if I can, may I have a motion please?
Yes, I move that the Board approve the Administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented in closed session.
Okay, then probably motion second, all in favor? All opposed by the same? Motion carries, Ms. Dixon, Personnel Recommendations?
I move that the Board approve the Administration's Personnel Recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Okay, it's been probably motion second, I'm slowing up now because I, I want to make sure Ms. Martin gets this, you know, we're working this. Okay, it's been second, all in favor? All opposed by the same? And now I will turn over to you, Ms. Morrison.
Item C, Level 3 Public Complaint Appeal, Board Policy FNG, offer the original motion.
I move to uphold the Administration's recommendation on the Level 3 Public Complaint Appeal as presented in closed session, and deny all other relief.
Second. Oh, okay.
I apologize.
Okay, thank you, so it's?
Policy G.
GF. Okay. Policy GF.
So I need to repeat the motion? No. Yes.
I call the vote, with no further discussion, I call the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed?
One exception.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you Ms. Morrison. Ms. Dixon, if you will, we'll go into our consent agenda. Help me out, let me know if you're ready.
I'm ready.
You are ready, okay. Our first consent, consent agenda item is going to be A, Approval Amendments, and that will be a consent. Next will be Item B, Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate, and 25 individually. Consent. Item C, 2018-19 Construction and Construction Related Purchases. That is a consent. D, Budget Transfer Amendments. That's also a consent. D, we just did D, this will be E, 5E, Bond Fund Transfer and Amendments. this will be E, 5E, bond fund transfer and amendments. Good there. 5F, tax refunds. That is consent. G, the adoption of the district calendar for 2019-2020 school year. And we will pull that. H, the approval of the sectional, of additional education consultants. That will be consent. 5I, approval of the selection of vendors to provide district-wide web-based access and software programs. That is consent. J, consideration of architect selection for Group 1 of multipurpose rooms. That will be a consent also. K, instructional materials for Proclamation 2019. Consent also. L, low attendance day waiver for Atascocita High School. Consent. M, teacher recruitment program interlocal agreement with Sam Houston State University. We will consent. And policy revisions, this is a final action on the policy revision. Consent. O, we've got an RFP number 2019-024, E-rate Internet Access Services for 2019. Consent. P, the evaluation capacity award performance interlocal agreement. Consent. Q, the approval, if you will, Ms. Dixon? We always, we always want to have good, good conversations. So, we will pull K. Pull K, please.
Okay.
And if you will, now read me back the consent agenda, please.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the following items by consent, 5A through 5F, and 5H through 5J.
Okay.
And last, 5L through 5P.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed by the same? Okay, motion carries. All right, let's go back up to item?
5G.
G, if we will, may I have a motion, please? And a second? Okay, Mr. Carney, I believe you pulled that one, so we can have a discussion on this.
Sure, yeah. So, before this board meeting, I'd asked some questions about the costs associated with adopting Option B. Dr. Fagan, do you mind running through that real quick?
Sure. So, we are looking at a few different recommendations to, in response to comments and concerns we've had regarding B. When we do the input through QualTrex, we also allow people to do comments. And so, we review all those comments and look for themes and trends, obviously the conversations we have with principals and others. There were three areas where we wanted to sort of make sure that we were paying attention as we moved into a different kind of calendar for the district. One is that providing transportation during those unique breaks in October and February, an activity bus, if you will, for our middle school students who would be in fine arts and athletics and may not be able to participate in those things if we didn't provide that transportation. So, at the, in my opinion, the high end of that, which is, we would like to give you all sort of the worst-case scenario, is about a $66,000 transportation cost for the district. The next piece of that is that what we reviewed, and Rick Gardner is working on the stipends for our middle school coaches, because they would be working during some of those weeks off when historically they have not. And so, therefore, we are interested in moving forward with a budget option to increase their stipends, for their coaching stipends for middle school coaches. And that's about a $50,000 item. The third item doesn't cost us really anything, other than we heard from some folks that said, you know, they wanted to make sure we had considered childcare options for families during the week in October and February. So, we have reached out to the YMCA and asked for their support and like they do at other times of the year, and have received positive response from them in that way. So, certainly, if parents need that support, we want to find the ways to make it available to them. So, that doesn't actually have a cost, but the other two things would have a budget amendment.
And how would those compare to an Option C, for example? Are those all additional costs for Option B versus Option C?
Yes. Option C, with only two days of the week being coupled up with a holiday, unlikely to need those activity buses, although I won't say that we wouldn't consider it. So, you'd have to, to bring that down to fewer days, but there still could be potentially a 50% cost there, because we would want to talk with our middle school folks about that and see if a four-day, actually for students, it would be a five-day weekend would, would cause that same sort of phenomenon where we would think students who are athletes wouldn't be in on Monday and Tuesday. So, it's possible that we'd move that forward in that scenario, although the bigger conversation has been around the full weeks off.
Thank you. Yes, I have some concerns with Option B as a calendar. And so, one of those is cost. So, as we've been discussing, school finance is topic number one in Austin at the moment. It's a little bit of unclear picture for us right now, what our, what our picture looks like. So, I think it's incumbent upon us to be very conservative in terms of the, the costs that we incur. And I, I think, as I look at the different options, it looks like we're having three additional days or maybe two additional days for each of those weeks compared to an Option C. And the cost associated with that is north of $100,000 versus zero. And, you know, as I stand back and look at that, I'm thinking, you know, that might hold us back from a teacher position or maybe some, some safety resource officers in our budget next year. So, that's a definite concern of mine. I also have some concerns about just how this compares to our current calendar. I think this is a pretty big change in terms of these, these full-week-long breaks. And I think it's, the timing as well could be very disruptive for certain students in terms of just getting into the swing of the semester and then having a full week off and then having to get back in. So, I'm a little bit concerned that the breaks are too much. I also worry about working parents. My wife and I both work. I think we're fortunate that we, we have options for childcare, but I know not everybody is very fortunate, you know, in that respect. And I would hate to see that, you know, people have to take all of their available vacation time and then some, you know, struggling to find solutions for their children. I have concerns about the YMCA. Are they, are they absolutely going to have enough capacity for all of UMBL ISD being off at the same time? So, you know, I'm a little concerned there. I know there's some hourly employees as well, if they have an extended period of time off, you know, this could negatively impact them. I think, you know, if you know about it in advance, you can plan for it. However, not everybody is as diligent and disciplined. And so, I could see that being a negative impact. I've also been approached by some parents as well with some kind of unintended consequences. So, divorced parents, for example, where there's some kind of custody battle. You know, I, I absolutely adore the time that I have with my children, and it's really difficult for me to swallow that there could be some people that are negatively impacted in that, in that capacity from a situation like this. The other concern I have about Option B is the teacher-in-service days at the end of the year. I've heard from many teachers that say that, you know, they, they love the, the different, different programs that we have in terms of the CNI, but they think it might be more effective to have that time during the year. And so, that's a concern of mine as well. I think if we consider an option such as C, I think that mitigates a lot of these concerns that I have, and I think others have them as well. I recognize that half of the district, parents and employees, you know, voted in favor of Option B. So, I just wanted to throw out these concerns, you know, for the consideration of the rest of the board, and make sure that we're having a candid discussion about this. So, thank you.
All right, yes, sir, Ms. Sitten.
And meaning no, no disrespect whatsoever, but as I mentioned earlier, I mean, we're not going to be able to find a calendar that's going to work for everybody. It's just not going to happen. I've heard a lot of the same, or similar concerns as well. I do appreciate the diligence that the Administration went through. Dr. Fagan, there's a lot of folks that aren't here, that may be watching it on video and haven't seen the agenda item. I think the, the agenda item is well-written as far as the, the timeline. And, and could you just kind of go through that real quick as far as all the, the work that went into and how we ended up with B and C, and then A, B and C, and, and came to this recommendation?
Okay. Well, it's been, it's been a long process. So, you may remember that a year ago, we started exploring the idea of not starting the Fourth of Monday in August. And the community was very supportive of using the District of Innovation waiver opportunity to start sooner in August. And so, we went ahead and built the calendar that is this year, which is very similar to Calendar A. And fully intended really to roll Calendar A forward for the next two years. That was what was, sort of our best thinking was, given the fact that we'd had that conversation last year. However, we received quite a bit of input and feedback that, that folks wanted us to explore a completely different calendar with a bit of a year-round-ish feel that had these extended breaks in both October and February, saying that, basically, that students do better when they have a little time to recharge, and that they just wanted us to see if it was possible. So, we took some neighboring district calendars and we umblisted them and made them, you know, adhere to all the rules and regulations that were required to have according to the state. 75,600 minutes for students, we had to have 187 days for teachers. There's just a lot of rules that we have to operate within. And we also have a commitment in this district to quality education, quality instruction through release time. So, we have late starts, we have early releases, we have days off, which allow our teachers to collaborate, provide a higher quality of instruction. So, after we got done doing all of that sausage-making, we ended up with Calendar B. And you probably remember, we did that initial survey where B was wildly the favorite. In fact, 30% of the comments that came back were from people who were enthusiastic about B, which is odd, by the way, because usually comments are not about enthusiasm. They're usually about, what about this, what about that? So, then we wanted to go forward, because there were some concerns that we thought, well, you know, we need to take a look at these concerns, because, you know, I've said this before, and we really mean it. UMBL ISD is family, we're a community, we work together, we have the hard conversations and do what's best for children. That's one of the things I love about this district. And so, there were some pretty consistent messages in those comments also about, are those weeks too long? And is spring break in the right place? And are we starting too early? So, we created C. And we were going to put B and C out, or we did for like a day. And then, there were some campaigns going on about multiple voting and this and that. We'd always kind of done an on-your-honor type of approach, but it, there was a lot of enthusiasm around calendar this year. And so, being uncertain about the quality of our data and the ability to disaggregate it appropriately, we pulled that back. We had some honest conversations with our family about, you know, how we want to behave going forward. And then, we put back out, we were going to put out back B and C, but then we got additional feedback from people who said, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, what about A? Because of the original survey, blah, 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 blah. So, we said, okay, you know, we're, we're here to, to work together. And we would never put out a calendar that we did not feel was viable, right? We wouldn't, we wouldn't even, because then what if people wanted? Then we'd say, oh, just kidding. No, we wouldn't do that. So, we only put out calendars we felt were viable in the best interest of our students and a real possibility. And the truth is, you know, there's a lot of research around calendars and this and that. But what we know is that it's the quality of the instruction in the classroom on a daily basis, not the way you order the days around, right? Because this is the same number of days, they're just moved around, right? So, we put all three back out and received back, feedback that we were able to disaggregate by staff member, parent, staff member who's also a parent. I mean, we have a lot more data this time. And basically, the answer was 50% of the staff and 50% of the community parents who vote, who not voted, input, wanted Calendar B. So, B continued to sort of have this wave of support, saying, you know, we would really like to try something different. And then, about 30% chose C and 20% A. And those are in round numbers, they're not exactly, you know, they might be 18 and, you get the idea. So, in any case, we put all that back out and that's where it came back. And although, there is some conversation around C being maybe a step forward and B being a bigger step forward, it seems there's a lot of enthusiasm around the notion of B and C, which are very different calendars. And so, we felt that based on the feedback of the community and the staff, that it was our, what we should do is recommend the calendar that was, had the strongest interest by both groups. And so, that's why we put forward the recommendation we did, and at the same time, listened to the concerns and tried to work through those with some, some budget recommendation modifications that we felt were completely viable in our $360 million budget process. So, that's the, that is the very short, long story.
Yes, Ms. Dixon.
I also heard some of the, some similar concerns that you have, Mr. Carney. And while I appreciate having quality data, I love this, this is great. But my question would be more around the educational benefit. I know there's data that supports that personally as an educator, but I was wondering, Dr. Fagan, if you don't mind, speaking a little to that. Because for me, Option B has elevated itself in all three instances in the survey. And that data is very important to me. But ultimately, for my kids, what I'm looking for is, you know, and all of the kids in the district, is the educational benefit to having those breaks throughout the school year. So, there, you know, I can, I can find research on a lot of different sides of an issue. So, I, I understand everyone else can do that, too. And so, I do think that we're talking about a negligible difference here. But there are, there is some thinking around a couple of areas. One, that children, particularly children who are from a lower socioeconomic status, benefit from a shorter summer break, which is a why a lot of folks are looking at. In fact, the legislature is saying that they're going to fund year-round schools for people who want to opt into that for this very reason, because there are districts who are saying that the summer slide is for real, and if they could have that year-round feel, that their children would do better. And so, there are, there's also, you know, conversations about meals and things like that also. So, there is real conversation about the benefits to children, particularly younger children from a low socioeconomic status who have struggled perhaps in reading development. And so, there's that conversation. The other side of it is, last year, our community was forced out of our comfort zone and box by a hurricane. And Kingwood High School and Summer Creek High School had to try very different schedules than they would have ever designed on their own, you know, without all the barriers that we faced. And a lot of families felt that there was a great deal of benefit from the regeneration their students had by starting later or being done earlier, or just some of those modifications. And we've heard a lot of that. And I think that's coming through in this idea of B, is that, you know, our students, our secondary students are, they work very hard in this district. They work hard on their classes, they work hard on their fine arts, they work hard on their athletics, on and on and on. And they have schedules that many adults could not do. And so, I think parents watch these children who are under tremendous amounts of pressure to achieve in so many areas, because we offer so many fantastic opportunities, that they, they really do see a benefit to opportunities to sleep, recharge, catch up, if you will, if you've been ill, all of those kind of things. And so, I think those are two areas that have come through this conversation as, as kind of good for children.
Yes, Ms. Conrad.
I'm just really excited that overwhelmingly, we're willing to try something a little bit different. And it doesn't mean we have to stay down that road. Obviously, we'll be measuring the impact of that. And I appreciate the Administration for providing the opportunity for parents and staff to provide feedback that ultimately guides this recommendation. For me, it was just validation of the direct contact that I was hearing, coming to around the same numbers as well. And also, it's, it's, it helps to know that the activities will continue, that your recommendation for transportation will ultimately help some of those hourly employees, too, who would be affected by, by being out for the week. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Morrison?
I just want to agree with Ms. Conrad. And I'm so glad that we're looking at something different. I mean, the old saying goes, if you do it the same way all the time, you get the same product, okay? Well, now, we're looking at things differently. And our kids are doing things differently. So, I, I'm just very, very proud that we're doing something a little bit.
Okay. And Dr. Fagan, I do have a question also. I tend to lean with Mr. Carney here, but I guess my question is about the, the, the why, as we're working with these folks. We hadn't really heard anything. Is this going to be a district cost, or is this a cost that's passed on to the parents?
I'm going to have to ask, and they're going to love it, Kathy and Lucy, who have actually had this, or, I don't know, it might be just Lucy, who, she, she sent me the information. That's why I, but I haven't actually had the, the conversation directly with the why. And, and basically, this whole conversation around the why is that we've heard from some parents that said, look, my, my local, I'm, I'm completely making this up, but my local daycare has said they won't be able to staff up or this and that. And there's been conversations in my neighborhood, probably all of ours, about this. And so, we have worked with the why previously in other times to offer sort of opportunities for families who need that support. So, Lucy, if there's anything else you can add to that?
It is a cost that will be passed on to the parents. Right now, it would be about $200 per week. The way that I think of it, as a consequence for childcare, is I'll pay for it in summer, but I'll also pay for it in, my summer is shorter. I'll break camp. Buy facility.
Are these new campuses or campus that the, that the why is currently in? Are these new campuses, or campus that the why is currently in?
Um, no, it's the one that's being rebuilt.
Okay, okay, good. All right. Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
Just one last comment before we go to vote. I want, again, once again, I want to thank our public information office. I mean, this, this was a lot of work. I mean, you, you sent out, you sent out one survey that went for a few weeks, and then you pulled it down and you, you aggregated the data, and then you went to send out another one, and then you pulled it back, and then you reworked it all, and then you sent out a third one, and so, y'all been busy, okay? Y'all been really busy. So I want to thank y'all for all the effort that you put into this, all the work that you put into this. That whole team is just, y'all have grown so much over the last few years with your, your product. And I just want to, want to thank y'all publicly for all you've been doing.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Morrison.
I just want to say, speaking as a former edu, as a former teacher and a former principal, it is refreshing to me that we're, we're thinking about looking at things a little bit differently, because being in a school, and kids going to school every day, and you see the struggles that they go through, and you also see what your teachers go through. And I heard from a lot of teachers and a lot of parents, too, and I heard the yays and I heard the nays, but I also heard the refreshing thought of being able to refresh. You know, teacher, it's, it's very difficult. I mean, you're dealing with a lot of different things now. So I think this is also a very good thing to look at, that your kids are not having, especially our at-risk kids, our kids that are in those title schools. You know, those long, those long breaks in the summer, don't do them justice. I, I speak as a former teacher on that one. So, to me, this looks very, very good for their future. So, I'll, I'll stop. I really will stop.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just want to say real quick.
Yes.
You know, I made, I made my opinion clear on it, but I just want to reiterate that I really appreciate all the effort that went into this, and how the Calendar Committee spent a lot of time on this. Administration, you guys put a lot of thought and effort into the different options, very, very well thought out plan in terms of, you know, the additional consequences that I was asking about earlier. So I think, I think, you know, it's a very spirited, healthy debate, and I really appreciate as well, looking at things differently and willing to try something new. So I'm eager to see how this plays out.
All right, thank you there, Mr. Carney, that sounds good. Looks like we have a motion to approve the calendar, option B for the 2019-20. It has already been moved, and second, yeah, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, looks like there's four, all opposed. All right, motion carries. Okay. Moving right along, I think we have another one, item K. Thank you so much here, so say instructional materials for confirmation 2019. I think this, can I have the motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Conrad, you started this?
Yes, sir. My apologies, I meant to send this question beforehand, but in reviewing, it, it says grades three, five, three to five TEACs coverage percentages, pending? Pending, pending what? What's, when is that resolved, and when is this purchased? And there's all these asterisks.
Oh, good.
Yes, so I can speak to that. Absolutely see, so if I can take a moment, so. And I think that has happened in the past. So we asked for a teacher and alt representative, we're talking right now about K group five, but we did that K group eight, and then for first one. About over a hundred participants, all of the ELA teams. And so we, our very first meeting on successful practices and the five pillars of reading. So it was a very experienced, alts to extend in grade, to choose where they sat, and looked at the successful practices in on extended, and so, all of the things that we want our students to get, I threw grades. The next time we met, after they had successful practices, and they gave us feedback on those successful practices, so we brought that back to the begin, asked them, what's your feedback on new successful practices and the five pillars of reading? Data that we collected from STAR, from RA, from our pilot campus experience, different data, where are we doing well? Where are we at gaps? And where, ask from teachers and alts, see that maybe we have a gap that we're unaware of? That feedback and that data as well, so it could drive us in looking for aid materials from umblized D and for our students. And so, that was a very process, because we thought out their feedback multiple times without us giving any input of their output. And, okay, so where are we now? Where do you want to? Question is perhaps ten years, so are we going to be at? So they did give us feedback on that as well. From all of that feedback, we were able to create a, that was teacher centered. That spanned every grade level representation. Also from special education, all of the special areas. They were able to then take that rubric and help. Practices in the data, so as we looked at instructional materials. Alts from the teachers and then from the. When we did that, at the adoptions that were on the material, on the state list, on the state list, did not meet any of the criteria that the teachers.
Okay.
Imagine that, right? So then we were tasked with coming up with something that did meet the criteria, but our teachers and our alts and principals said, we needed to have for good quality. So that led us to the recommendations, they were different, Fontes and Penel classroom components. And so, if any of you are educators and you know Fontes and Penel, you're probably like, yeah. So, the fourth and fifth grade are in production right now, so they will be released all, and we have been very. We had a two-week open house, and anybody that came by here. Were able to see the third grade kit, and we are recommending for third grade, and will be noted to appropriate texts. Oh, but the TEACs correlation, so because it was off list, we did have to go through into a. All of the Fontes and Penel components that, elementary components. The Lucy Hawkins units of writing, the Lucy Hawkins units of study. Jennifer Sarah Follow, reading and writing strategies, Jennifer. All of those combined, covering the TEACs, and we know that there is.
So this gets reported to the state or something, yes?
Correct, yes, maybe, because we go off list, we have to make sure that we are.
But by the time you have to do that, these will no longer, that will already come out of print, and you can verify it?
Correct, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Fagan?
I just, I just want, that, that is so illustrative of where we are right now in our district, where we know best, we are willing to do the hard work, it's much easier to buy a package something off a list, even if it's not very good, and just move it forward. That's what a lot of my good friends would do. And, and so I just want to say thank you to all of you guys for going through the process of really identifying the needs, and then finding the very best possible resources, and then doing the work to get those resources qualified for the state. That is above and beyond by any measure, and it is going to pay dividends here for a very long time, so thank you.
Not only that, you've got the excitement of the teachers who are gonna get to use these materials, and they're.
Would you say Fontes and Penel to a?
Yes.
Yes, I know.
I do. I don't know if the tree teachers do, I'm not sure about the right one.
And you have to wonder why those aren't on the list, don't you? Okay, I'm just gonna say that.
Okay, well, good. Ms. Conrad, okay, good. So we have a motion, all in favor of the item, raise your hand. All opposed by the same, motion carries. Next, we have an action item here, and I'm going to, blast is on here.
Trustee election.
Trustee election. Order for the trustee election, and this, this, I'm gonna yield, I'm gonna yield to our legal here. Do we have to read this here?
I recommend your priorities.
Well, read out the full motion, okay, good. And I will yield to you, Ms. Dixon.
Okay, Mr. President, I move to approve the order for trustee election, calling for the election of positions two, six, and seven, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute all agreements and take all actions necessary for the same.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, spin probably motion in second, all in favor. Opposed by the same, motion carries, all right. Thank you, we have an election.
We have to do, put a report on C.
On C?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving down to item number seven on information items, we will probably, let's see, anybody have any questions on A, financial service reports? And none, if you do, you can get with the superintendent and Seal. Report of management fees paid under cooperative purchasing contracts? Information items there, buy boards, none. C, and I will turn this over to you, Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. Every year, we are required to present the annual performance report for our school district, so this will be for the 2017-18 school year, and it will be limited to the items that are required by the state of Texas that we're all very familiar with. And I'd like to invite Dr. Rohn, I believe he's doing the presentation tonight, from our assessment accountability department. And he has, well, okay, Mary Kay's sorta with them. Supporting staff there.
At the end.
Yep.
Might need your help, John.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Rohn.
So as was mentioned, Texas Education Code 39 requires that each district publish an annual report that includes information from the TAPR, which is the Texas Academic Performance Report. So we're just gonna talk about some of the highlights of that report today. All the information is actually contained on the website, under the accountability section of the, the district website. We'll also provide hard copies of all these components made available to the public within two weeks of this meeting. So before we talk about the individual pieces, I want to mention that the district is accredited by the Texas Agent, by the Texas Education Agency, so we are fully accredited. And in the TAPR, it mentions a lot of data points. One talks about staff members, we have five thousand two hundred and thirty-three, this is an increase from the prior year of one point one percent, and sixty-seven point three percent were professional staff, which means teachers, professional and administrative support. Also in the TAPR, there is some, there are some financial figures. One part talks about the tax base, the district is eighty point nine percent residential, which is an increase from the prior year. It's also seventeen point two percent business, and it's a slight decrease, or actually substantial point nine, seventeen point nine to seventeen point two. And then, also, it mentions various ratios related to finance, I'm not gonna get into Mr. Seal's domain, but we're gonna talk just briefly about some of the things mentioned in the TAPR. So the instructional expenditure ratio was sixty-five point two percent, and that's a slight decrease from the prior year. In the, in the last ten years, this, we noticed a substantial increase in student enrollment, roughly a thousand students or so a year where, if we look at the year 2010, thirty-five sixty-seven, thirty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-eight, and the current October figures are forty-three thousand three, sorry, forty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-three. So we have a, a large increase in students, and at the same time, we have a, a large change in diversity. We're becoming more and more diverse as we grow. We have, again, roughly, we welcome about a thousand more students every year, and we're more and more diverse. Again, these figures are from the PIM snapshot, the October 2010 and October 2017, so these are figures from the TAPR, so you can see that we're becoming more and more diverse in these different ethnic groups, and the different economically disadvantaged English language learner, and also at-risk students. In 2018, we had yet another change in the accountability system, we had four domains, or four indices became three domains, and districts were rated on actual letter grade this year, A, B, C, D, F. Campuses were still rated just two ways, either met standard or improvement required, and we had different methodologies for these three different areas. And a lot of this is dependent on STAR scores. We'll talk about those domains in just a minute. But in, in the state accountability system, we had forty campuses that met standard, which is the highest rank possible. The district was not ranked, it was not rated due to the Hurricane Harvey provision. And in addition to these ratings, also, we had twenty distinctions that were earned by fourteen campuses. Distinctions are mostly based on STAR scores in the area of reading, math, science, social studies, and also in the area of progress, meaning STAR performance from one year to the next. When you look at the STAR exam, we, we have measures in the TAPR, in the academic performance report, kind of compares the district to the, to the region and also to the state. And in the areas of approaches, which is kind of the first level of achievement for students, Meats is the second level, then Masters, meaning they're, they're well-prepared for the next grade level. We are exceeding the, the region and also the state level in, in all these different areas, not only in approaches, Meats, and Masters, but in the subcontinent areas, meaning in mathematics, and reading, and science, social studies, and writing. We talked about the attendance rates, and the dropout rates, and graduation rates. The attendance rate was ninety-five point nine percent, which is better than the state, and the regional rates of ninety-five point seven. The dropout rates for grades seven and eight were zero percent, and grades nine through twelve was zero point eight percent. Again, these are all better than the, the region and state rates. The cohort 2017, so the graduates, those who entered as ninth graders, we had ninety-three point three percent graduated, that compares to the state rate of eighty-nine point seven. And then we have different groups here that were also in the nineties, and we have, in special education was sixty-seven point six, and English language learners was seventy-eight point one percent. Again, all these different sub, subgroups are higher than the, than the region and the state, respectively. We also had some college readiness indications, kind of created for this report, and all these are, again, above the state averages, above the state percentages, and also the region. And so, advanced dual course completions, so students who are in dual credit, students who are in. who were in advanced coursework. And this was a slightly different calculation this year. This is all grades nine through 12 for high school, and it was at 43.1. The state was 37.1. And then we have students who took the, an AP test or the International Baccalaureate Test, and they scored high enough to receive college credit on, almost, at most colleges, either three or four on the AP or, or four or better on the IB. It was at 57.7, where the state was at 49.1. The SAT and ACT averages, again, were higher for our district. It's 1074 for SAT, which is just the rating in the math. State was at 1019. The ACT composite out of the four different areas was 22.5, where the state was 20.3. Now, new measure is, is college and career military ready. And that's driven by the state's goal set up by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. And that goal is, is called 60 by 30. The idea is that 60% of young adults should be prepared for college and career by the year 2030. So, for the 2017 graduates, the district is almost at that, at that point already, at 59.7. So, it's almost, we're almost already at that goal that was set for the year 2030. Now, the state is, is a little bit further behind. They're about 54%. We also have campus improvement plans. We have, those are, those are part of the required report. Those comprehensive needs assessments and goals and performances are posted on the website in the state and federal program section of the district website. Carrying on, talking about the, the graduates from 2015, 2016. Enrollment in higher education was 58.5 compared to, again, higher than the state's average. And then those students who completed one year without remediation, meaning they didn't have to take developmental math, they didn't have to take developmental English, was 64.1%. So, the, the graduates from UMBL ISD, class of 2016, 20, of those 27, 80 graduates, 28% went to four-year colleges. We had, that compares to 21% for the state. We had 31% of those graduates went on to two-year public, whereas the state was only 24. And 3% went to some private college or university in Texas. The Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board also tracks GPA. And students who graduate from UMBL ISD perform well in, in post-secondary education. 83.8% of those at four years have greater than a 2.0 in their first year. And 66.1% of those students who went on to two-year colleges. So, they did well. Now, there's also some information about serious and violent criminal incidents by campus, including conduct violations that require state mandatory removal to the discipline program or state mandatory expulsions. And we, this information, again, is on the, the website, but discipline incidents in these categories comprise less than 6% of the total discipline incidents. And the total number of serious incidents have increased about 2% from the prior year, which basically reflects the, the increase in our population as well. There is, in addition to some of the academic data in the TAPR, there's also finance data. At one time, there were separate tables in the TAPR that included all the, the financial information from the PEEMs submission, the, the major data collection that schools have to do in, in October and, and submit that to the state. But what, instead, what they've done is they've provided links to the website. So, all those, all those printed links are included in the reports on our website and also on the, the PDF versions of those reports. The district's adopted tax rate was 1.52, or a dollar and 52 cents, which is $1.17 for maintenance and operations and 35 cents interest and sinking fund. So, again, all, all the financial information from, from PEEMs 2016-17 is set up to be linked in these reports, and that can be accessed, again, either from TEA or through the accountability documents on our website. Also need to mention that we have state targets for special education and the state performance plan for special education. There, there are 14 indicators that are considered. And among these graduation rate dropout rates, statewide assessments, suspension expulsion rates, and the district's special education determination status for 2018 is, meets requirements. So, it is also approved by the state. I want to quickly mention some changes that are coming up for accountability in 2019. We have the, school districts will be rated A through F, again, as they, they, we would have been last year, except for the Harvey provision. This year, it won't be meets, a standard or improvement required. Instead, it'll be letter grades, again, A, B, C, D, F. And these will be based on these three different domains. So, we have student achievement, school progress in closing the gaps, and it's a rather complicated system. But TEA has provided a, a more user-friendly website, Texasschools.gov, where you can go in, you can type in your, the district, you can type in campus, and you can get information on each of these three different domains, how they were calculated, and what the, what the school results were for those particular years. So, this is, again, this is the major change that's going to happen. I'm going to ask my colleague, Mary Kay Januchis, to, to mention another change that is happening also.
Thank you. I want to talk about the local accountability system. The local accountability system in Texas was established by House Bill 22 through the 85th Texas Legislature. The program was designed to provide districts with the opportunity to evaluate their campuses using locally designed domains and measures. Now, these domains and measures had to be, had to provide a way to have an A to F rating. They had to be very valid, reliable, and have results that could be audited. Up to half of the overall state accountability rating could be comprised of the local accountability and for each eligible campus. So, UMBL ISD was selected in the fall of 2017 to be one of 20 pilot districts in the state. So, we were very excited at that time to be one of those and at the table and helping to develop this. Participating districts were required to attend four training sessions with TEA in the spring of 2018. And then a comprehensive plan we submitted last August to TEA after review, a number of conference calls, written feedback. The plan was revised and we resubmitted in October, along with campus scores for each of those domains and measures. Last month, TEA released the what-if ratings for UMBL ISD's plan. And based on the what-if ratings that we received from TEA, 48% of UMBL ISD campuses would have increased their letter grade rating, and 52 would have retained the same rating. Currently, we have district committees that are meeting diligently. We're in the process of revising the plan to submit for a 2018-19 plan. I know the year's good part over already, but that's what they're doing. And if approved by TEA, those scores would be submitted in June of 2019 and would be incorporated officially in the state accountability ratings in August of 2019. So, that's the process we're in right now. If all goes well through the spring, the long-term plan, the long-term goal moving forward, is to develop and submit a three-year plan to TEA for 2019, 2020. That is what they're wanting, is a three-year plan. And so, if we move forward with that process and submit a three-year plan that's approved, then we'll have that in place of August of 2019. That will begin in the 1920 school year.
Thank you. So, again, as a reminder, there will be a hard copy of this presentation and the supporting documents. The information is located under the accountability tab on the district website. If you have questions, you can, you can contact me. I also want to take this moment to, to thank public communication for all their help. I know that, that we have a lot of required reports. There's a federal report card, there's the TEA campus report card, and you can find that kind of information on the campus profile section of the school. So, if you're interested in any particular school, you can go to that individual school website, you can look that information up. And that's due to their hard work. So, they've done a lot of hard work editing and putting that out for the, for the community, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Looks like next, any future board consideration? Mr. Carney, anything for you sitting? Okay, down here? None? Seeing none? Then we will be adjourned. Everyone be safe. Thank you.